The sixth, 2023, the city council meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Shirley Murdoch, member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Please stand for the invocation and then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are gathered together in the capacity of a city council meeting and wish to first express our gratitude unto thee that we live in a nation, a state, and a city where individual citizens can come to city council meetings, to where those that make the decisions for our daily lives and the rules and laws for setting up businesses and construction and other things, we can listen to them. And if there's a problem, citizens can have input into maybe the way things need changing or increasing, or to tell thank you to our city for the wonderful way we have living here in Independence. We ask thee to bless the mayor and each member of the city council with guidance and direction as to the best ways and means of conducting the affairs of Independence. We love thee and give thee gratitude. And dear Father, please bless those that are in Syria and Turkey that are suffering so greatly with the earthquake that they may be found and cared for and can rebuild their cities. We love thee and give thee our devotion in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me. My pledge of allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could have a moment of personal privilege to introduce some scouts that are with us tonight?
Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Just want to introduce and thank them for coming. There's two boys and a leader from Troop 201, Maywood Baptist Church, and two wee blows from Troop, or Pack 738, Glenwood Baptist. And so they're here working on their citizenship badges and I just want to welcome them, thanks to them for coming out tonight. And you're among good company because there's a number of scouters around, so, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And that'll bring us to citizens' requests. The first person to speak is Valerie Russell. Going once, Valerie. All right, I will, if she shows up and the others, and we're not out of that section, I'll let her speak before it ends. So with that, Maria Vargas, if you can come up and state your name and your address, please.
Well, hello, my name's Maria Vargas. I'm from 713 South Willis Avenue. Well, I just wanted to talk about like the rezoning and getting your guys' approval. I've been having a lot of difficulties with me trying to sell my house and try to go through the closing process. So I did speak to Tom about getting a letter probably from you guys that would state, you know, if you guys do approve the rezoning for my process to be a little bit more easier and not have difficulties on the closing. My closing date is on the February 10th, so if I could get a letter from you guys, I would really appreciate it. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is Charles, is it Ray or Roy?
Ray.
Ray, Charles, come on up and please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Charles Ray. I live at 10212 East Kentucky Road here in Independence. Today, my concern is with the breed-specific legislation we have here in Independence. The ban that they have on dogs poses an issue for families like mine. We have a dog that resembles what you guys have a ban on. It's not a pit bull, but you have a ban on pit bulls. Somebody drove by through the alleyway and reported nine different neighbors in our neighborhood. To my children, when this letter came, it's like a brother to my son, I've had the dog longer than I've had my son. I hate to say that, but to show reverence. To them, it was like people didn't care and nobody cares about our family or us living in the city. So it's like, to us, that hurts. That feels like you're trying to take away part of our family just because it resembles something that may have a ban on it. My dog's never gotten out of my yard. My dog's never hurt nobody. We don't bother nobody. So I don't know where this came from or why, but because of this legislation, now we're having to go out of our way to spend extra money to prove that our dog isn't what it's said to be. I just feel like every other city here around us in the greater Kansas City area has lifted these bans to eliminate this problem. By focusing on this issue the way that it is, as a ban on just a certain breed, it focuses money and energy on an item that, we have all other things here in Independence that money could be focused on. I mean, it does cost our city money. It costs everybody money, costs us time, and now it's affecting families. I mean, it's not just affecting mine. There's other families in my neighborhood, but they're afraid to come and say anything because they feel like, where will it stop? It's not fair for families to have to feel like they have to live in fear to live here. And I kind of feel like that's where we've been placed. I don't want to feel like I need to sell my home and move out of Independence to satisfy my children. And I don't feel like I should have to come in front of people and explain my dog when she's done nothing wrong. I just, I feel like we've been pointed out for something that maybe somebody else has done wrong. And I can't fix the past. I can't fix what other people have done. But we didn't have nothing to do with that. And I just feel like there's got to be something done to where families in our position aren't put in this position. I mean, I don't know what else to do, that's why I came here today. I received a letter in the mail that said, we had seven days. And it said we had 10 days, but by the day we got it and the day it was dated, we only had seven days. For anybody to try to rehome their dog or to even think about that, seven days? I mean, honestly? I mean, I just, I don't know what to do or where to turn. I know we're going to do what we have to to prove that our dog's not what it's supposed to be, but why should we have to go through this? We didn't do nothing. We haven't done nothing wrong. I just, I don't know. I feel like maybe there are other families that don't. I didn't want to come here today, but I can't sit back and not, and then wonder, what if? So here I am. And I just ask that, maybe we can take a look at this. It may not end with us, but I feel like somebody's got to stand up and say something, so here I am. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Appreciate it. And that was our last, okay. And that'll bring us to the I-STAR presentation we'll recognize. I'm sorry. Did, I don't know, did Valerie come in? Going once on Valerie, going twice on Valerie? All right. Valerie did not come in, but we can maybe reach out to her. Okay. With that, the next item is the I-STAR presentation, and so if you can proceed.
Bill number 23-708, a resolution recognizing Matthew Byram and Cameron Alt, officers with the Independence Police Department, as the I-STAR award recipients for February 2023.
Okay. And I've got just a bit of a story about Cameron and Matt and what they did to help some citizens in our area, so appreciate their work. On January 4th, 2023, Officer Matt Byram and Cameron Alt, and I hope I pronounced those correctly. Perfect. They were dispatched to the area on 24 Highway near Claremont Avenue in reference to a woman and her young child possibly setting up a homeless camp in the woods in that area. Officers located the woman and the child and learned that they had just been evicted that day from their house. The officers immediately placed them in the police cars to keep them warm. They were not under arrest, just for warmth, right? Very good. They drove the mother to pick up the older children from school and then began looking for shelters, but they were all full. Officer Byram and Alt contacted the community services officer, Matt McLaughlin, and I know he works a lot on this and he does a great job, who had connections with Community Service League. The officers knew it'd be too cold outside and unsafe for the mother and her children to be living outside in the woods. A Community Service League officer, or excuse me, representative responded to the scene and was able to provide the mother and children hotel vouchers for several nights. The officers transported the mother and child and their belongings to the hotel. If it were not for these officers' care, compassion, and concern for this family, and going above and beyond for these individuals, they may have had to sleep outside in the bitter cold that evening with the temperatures being in the highs that day in the 40s, but the lows that night were in the low 30s. So officers, I just want to say thank you on behalf of everyone for going above and beyond and having a great story of service for our city. So come on up and we can get you the certificates. And we have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings us to the consent agenda. Councilmember Hobart, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hobart, please proceed.
I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Very good. We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the consent items. Does anyone want to pull any of those items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull item number four.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll pull item number four if we can have a motion on all the rest of the consent items and we'll pull that out for, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but we're going to discuss, she pulled out number four.
We'll do that after we go down the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and approve the motion for the consent agenda for all of the other items except number four. So, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Councilmember, please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, could you just speak for a moment about the Green Light project with Mid-America Regional Council and what opportunities you think that offers the city?
I'd be happy to. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the Operation Green Light program has been a regional asset for the Kansas City metropolitan area for several decades now. Believe this current iteration will include 32 different cities across the metropolitan area. Its success does come in its regional coordination where we are able to synchronize traffic signals both within cities and then between jurisdictions as well, which helps us with issues like carbon emissions, not having the starting and stopping, wear and tear on pavement, not braking at an intersection and restarting, pedestrian and other vehicular safety issues. So there's a number of benefits associated with it, not only for the corridors that we currently operate this program on, but future corridors as well. There's opportunity for us to study those as part of our ongoing traffic assessments we do in different corridors if we're getting a grant for a project, the ability for us to see, is there an opportunity for us to improve the vehicular traffic experience for somebody to where they are able to start at one end of a road and travel all the way to the other end? So for, you know, this, for example, I'm not saying this specifically, but as an example, that might be like Nolan Road, that you could start at 24 Highway and travel all the way down to 40 Highway, and if you're traveling at the appropriate speed, be able to move all the way through that corridor without having to stop. That is the theory and the idea behind Operation Green Light. So both in continuing where we have implemented that and then opportunities to implement that in other corridors moving forward.
Thank you, councilmember. And I did not state the vote yet earlier on the consent agenda with seven to zero, and so let's go ahead and vote on the polled item number four. Yep, can we have a motion? Someone give me a motion to approve number four.
A motion to approve item number four?
Thank you. And we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion further? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Item number four passes seven to zero, and that brings us to the regular agenda. This takes us to our public hearing, and we'll get that started. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the rezoning from I-1 Industrial to R-6 Single Family Residential for the properties located at 709 and 713 South Willis Avenue. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on December 13th of 2022. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. As Mrs. Vargas spoke to earlier, in this particular rezoning, there are two lots, one currently, they're both currently zoned I-1. The property owner has fixed up one of the houses on 713, 709, the property had actually been demolished, and they do wish to get this rezoned to R-6, which is currently what is actually being used for, for the purposes of being able to either get loans or to sell those properties in the future and make repairs. I have no new information to provide.
And if I could, and this was the discussion we had from Ms. Vargas earlier, is that correct? And so will we be able to meet her timelines and all of that?
Yes. If this gets approved tonight, we'd be able to provide her a letter of zoning verification tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
And that would be soon enough?
Yes.
Okay, very, very good. So excellent.
Okay.
Anyone else have a further discussion? Okay. Okay. That'll close the public hearing, and please, Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number 23-005, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District R-6 Single Family Residential for the properties at 709 and 713 South Willis Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And this is approved, seven to zero. Okay. This takes us to non-ordinance items. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 23-714, a resolution adopting the 2023-2024 City of Independence Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to move to postpone this for two weeks to our next regular meeting and ask the city manager to make a presentation on this at the study session next week.
I'll second that motion.
I just think, you know, we spent a lot of time in working on this action plan. I know the staff spent a lot of time on this. It's an important item for the city, and I think it just warrants a little bit more attention than just passing it tonight and not really having any discussion about it. So that's why I'm making that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, does that give you enough time for the next study session to-
Yeah, I'll be able to put together a thoughtful presentation for the council at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And it passes seven to zero. The next item has been polled, so we'll go to ordinances. This takes us to second readings. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
You'll have to make a motion.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we have a motion to-
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to table item 23-715.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, thank you.
That brings us to ordinances for second readings. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number 22-107, an ordinance admitting the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to short-term rentals. Second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I have one amendment to make. Under 14-424-25-B, subsection four, the sentence currently reads, "The short-term rental operator fails to pay transient guest tax, sales tax, and/or property taxes." I want to insert two words into that sentence, so it will now read, "The short-term rental operator fails to report and pay transient guest tax, transient guest tax, sales tax, and/or property taxes." So I'm adding two words, "report and." I've provided this language to the city manager, to Mr. Scannell. We've discussed it, and I believe that's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? I mean, come on, that's just two words. We should talk about this quite a bit.
All right.
No discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And the amendment passes seven to zero. Any further discussion on the short-term rental agreement or proposal or ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we need a motion and a second to approve it, but then we can discuss. Anybody make the motion?
Oh, Councilmember Steinmeier had a-
Had a question?
Boy, you had-
Okay.
You asked if there was any other comment regarding the 22-7107, or, you know, 107. I want to make sure I'm clear in understanding where we have violations under number five, section 14-424. If we look at R adds a violation, penalty enforcement provision section, and then in S, there's a revocation process. But it looks to me, and it looks like the commissioners questioned the nature of the code violations, are those, I guess, I'll direct this at you, Mr. Walker, are these code violations for the city codes only? And then part two is, what happens if we have noise complaints and the police are called out? Is that covered? And if so, are they under the same section? Or do we need to add some teeth to the noise and traffic and all the, I'm dealing with one right now in my district that's operating illegally?
Well, let's get that address.
Yeah, I've got it for you.
And then, second of all, this violation of this provision would relate to any city code of ordinance matter. So if it's a noise violation, if it is a property maintenance issue, if it is something criminal or civil in nature, any violation of city code, front to back, cover to cover, is going to pertain to adding up to those two violations in that period of time.
Okay.
So go ahead.
I was just, I'm just reading. There'd be a hearing with the owner based on the complaint, and tickets may be written during, or depending on the outcome. That sounds to me more like city code.
So city- Glad I'm not the only one hearing voices. When we say city code, we do, so, so unless I'm mistaken, Mr. City Attorney, it wouldn't necessarily anything, you know, in state statute, but anything that we can enforce in our existing code of ordinances would qualify as a violation under these provisions.
So in a three-month period, if they have code violations, police reports, noise violations, illegal parking-
Yeah, so that goes- Too many violating an occupancy limit, any of those kinds of issues-
Okay.
-will trip this wire.
Okay, and so three strikes and they're out?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate you throwing your voice. That was awesome, so. Okay, and I know it was covered in here, but I wanted to state it because I know there's people that are paying attention to this, and I want them to know that there are teeth associated to this disagreement, that it's, you can't just rent your house to VRBO or Airbnb and have parties and go unnoticed.
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
This is going to allow us to be much more strict with the bad actors in our community and make sure that our permanent residents have the peace of mind in their homes that they are entitled to.
Okay, and I will get you that address.
Thank you.
I'm waiting for a letter that was written by the homeowner.
Yeah.
Apparently, they live in Utah and they own it, and they're, and they've admitted that they're operating it without a license. So this should be quite easy for us.
Fantastic.
I'm going to get it for us.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Quick comment, and I wanted to just thank Mr. Walker and his Community Development Director, Mr. Scannell. I wanted to publicly thank them for the work that they did on this short-term rental revocation. We kind of put them through the wringer on this, and through a lot of public comment, through a lot of public interaction, and through lots of continuances. Mr. Scannell looked at codes across the country to great extent and did a fine job, in my opinion. So I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Walker, that you and your staff knew that we appreciated, at least I do, the hard work and effort that he put into this. So thank you very much. Appreciate it, and it's appropriately left with Mr. Scannell and the Community Development
Keep moving along with the noise and the general routing. One of the things that we did add to this new version is section N, which requires a noise management plan that must include a continuous operation, noise monitoring device. And I was intrigued with that, so I talked a little bit with Mister Scannell about it and it's an interesting device that you buy into and help monitors noise, loud, disturbing type of noises that can be another safeguard to have when we have these in our community, to have that safeguard. So thanks for putting that in and Tom, thanks for all the hard work you and your team put in on this.
Please proceed.
If I could ask the city manager a question?
Sure.
Just want to make sure I'm clear on one thing, and that is that this applies to existing short-term rentals as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted, that's what I thought. I think it's important for the public to know that this will then apply to everybody and not just the new ones.
No, it won't grandfather anyone in. Everybody will be treated the same.
Right, thank you.
Any further discussion? I too wanted to thank the city staff for the amount of work and also a person I don't think has gotten accolades, but did a lot of work on this was our assistant city manager too. Because, you know, I put you through the wringer on having you reach out, I think maybe eight people, and said, "Would you please talk to these eight people because they have real concerns about this?" You did, you reached out to them, you talked to them and got their feedback. And I think one of the, and this is a silent thing, it's not noticed, and sometimes in listening to things, it's the things you don't, you know, it's not said. But you saw a lot of people that were here when the short-term rental process was started and they were in this room and they were here and they were involved. They're not here tonight and that's an indication that they were satisfied. And I can't speak for everyone, but that's what I'm reading into it, is that they were satisfied, they knew it was on the agenda, they knew we're gonna have a final vote for it tonight. And that's an important key, is to make sure that we, that we, as a city, that we listen to people and that we reach out to them and we find out what their concerns are and that, you know, we civilly and respectfully hear their concerns and have a very, very robust discussion, even though many of them disagreed with us. But we found a way to find that common ground. So I wanted to thank you for that and thank the staff because I know we made a lot of requests of you to make this happen and to make this work and I really appreciate all the work that you did. And got this point that, another great indicator is when we don't have a lot of people who take the microphone to complain about a policy, that's also saying, "Guess what? We've gotten to a point that, you know, we've checked all the boxes." And I think that's very, very important too. So, you know, I just wanted to say, "Great job, thank you for that, thank you for the efforts and going above and beyond the call of duty and satisfying all my requests that I had." And I know I had a ton of them, so, you know, thank you. But it's just so important for us to listen and you demonstrated that, you did a great job of it and you took some things off my plate and I want to thank you for that too. So, anybody else? We need a motion and a second, right? Kind of motion, please.
Happy to make the motion that we consider twenty-two dash one-zero-seven dash two-R.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the ordinance passes seven to zero. And this will bring us. Let me make a note and I'll move on. That takes us to first reading, right?
We have another second reading.
Got one more, okay. Can you read the next one, please?
Bill number twenty-three dash zero-zero-four, an ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditures for salaries for lifeguards at the Adventure Oasis Water Complex for fifty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and making the necessary appropriations, second and final reading.
Do I have a motion and a second?
We don't need one.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mister City Manager, it's a quick question. If I'm clear on this, this raises the hourly rate to fifteen dollars an hour, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, and hopefully it'll help because I know last year we were short lifeguards and we couldn't, we could only allow certain people in and a number of folks.
There were, there were certain parts of the water park we weren't able to operate because of those staffing shortages. Human talent is in scarce supply right now. We're competing with a lot of different employers out there. So just like those employers, we're needing to make sure our wages are competitive to attract enough staff that we can properly staff the park and give our community that full visitor experience.
Very good, okay. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the pay raise for the lifeguards passes seven to zero. And that brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number twenty-three dash zero-zero-six, an ordinance authorizing final disposition of certain city records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such disposition. Bill number twenty-three dash zero-zero-seven, an ordinance authorizing final disposition of certain city audio and video records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such disposition. Bill number twenty-three dash zero-zero-eight, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R six, single-family residential to R twelve, two-family residential for the property at seven-zero-one North Forest Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Bill number twenty-three dash zero-zero-nine, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R thirty, PUD, high-density residential planned unit development in District R twelve, two-family residential to District R six, single-family residential for the property at nine-six-zero-seven East US Twenty-four Highway in Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. And I'm gonna take a little bit out of order here. Mister City Manager, do you have any other final comments this evening?
I have nothing else tonight, sir.
All right. Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember comments?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister City Manager, I think it was last study session, there was supposed to be a presentation from, for IPL from Mister Nail and then I, and then it was taken off and then I was expecting it to see on the next study session agenda, but it wasn't there. Do you know when we should be getting that?
Let me, let me check with staff and get back to you on a firm date on that. I don't have that at my fingertips.
Okay, I just, I think we got some important decisions to make regarding IPL and I'd like to kind of get started on them when the presentation's ready.
Would agree.
Something else, I know there was, with all the discussion a month or so ago with the trash service and stuff, we had mentioned maybe possibly put an ordinance in effect to require trash service. I, I'm still getting lots of phone calls, illegal dumping, you know, up and down Jones Road right now, somebody dumped a whole bunch of bags of trash. I don't know if it would do any good, I have no idea, but I think we at least need to try something. So I think I'd be in favor of maybe requiring it, trash service. But I can think of a couple of reasons maybe somebody wouldn't have it. So if we were to go down that route, maybe an opt-out clause in there somehow. I don't know if it's feasible. So I don't know if the rest, how the rest of the council feels on it, but I think at this point I would definitely be on board with something like that. So then one other thing, I, with spring coming, I don't know about the logistics of this, but I would like to see the city try to do like a massive wide city cleanup, bring in some dumpsters, put them at various locations on a Saturday or Sunday and give people the opportunity to get rid of some of this stuff. Maybe we can work with the trash companies in town. Maybe they would, you know, donate some, maybe they would, they would give it to us at cost. But if we could find some funds to do something like this, I would definitely come out and volunteer on a Saturday or Sunday. So if, but if, I don't know, like I said, how the rest of the council feels, but I'd like to see something like that looked into, so. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Fun time of year since the Chiefs are going to the Super Bowl. It's really cool to go down winter, going through Inglewood and seeing the Chiefs' flags along Winter Road. In the evening time, those are great, great pictures. So I love seeing that. This time of year is really nice to see the Hearts to Hearts program going from the Inglewood to Independence Square. So thank you to all the volunteers, to West End Connection that puts it on and just brings some really good love, strong positivity and connectivity to, to the city. I love this time of year. Also, to Councilman Stewart's point, there is going to be a cleanup along Twenty-third and Sterling, or, excuse me, Twenty-third and Crissler this Saturday. We're gonna be focusing back around the woods and along the ride away there from nine-thirty to eleven, I believe, working with the Independence Alive and Well Group. So thank you for their volunteerism and thank you to city staff for helping kind of put this together. So have a good weekend, go Chiefs.
Thank you. Proceed.
Mister Mayor, just want to share with my colleagues that Miss Councilmember McCandless and I spent a fair amount of time with IPL a couple of weeks ago and got to review the spreadsheets that really do a great job of predicting or trying to help predict the future of power and light. And I would just, you know, I really appreciated that, that level of information I hadn't seen before and I really appreciated that. Would just encourage my fellow councilmembers to do the same, go out and spend, you know, less than two hours and it was really informative. And so I would certainly encourage that. And other than that, go Chiefs.
Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Couple of things, just wanted to let the folks with the, Mister Ray and his family, we do, we hear you. This is, the breed-specific ban that's in place is a big and ongoing issue. Certainly, my heart goes out to you and your family. I saw how emotional it is for you and I don't mean to make it worse for you. I'm sorry. It is a big issue and one that I would like to see this council at some point address. I'm not in any way calling out my colleagues. There are lots of sides to this. But I wanted to make sure you know that we hear you. So thank you for doing something that you probably have never done before. And we appreciate seeing you here very much. One more thing, as Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee, I've had the pleasure to work with Dr. Eric Green, so has many of the council, on and off over the last few months. And I'm not trying to embarrass him or anything else, but he will be leaving us this week and I just wanted to publicly thank him for his service. He did complete a couple of very important and challenging projects for us that are gonna make a meaningful difference for us, especially in the upcoming budget season. So as somebody that works closely with Audit and Finance, I wanted to thank you, Eric, and I wanted to certainly let you know the door, the door is always open and we have thoroughly enjoyed having you here and we certainly wish you the best for you and your family going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. And the sound you heard was my chair falling apart, so this is part of the chair, so. I'm not sure we have the money in the budget to fix this. Do we, City Manager, we don't, so I'll just have to deal with this. All right, so, well, at least though I just, don't get out of hand. Very, very good. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Tomorrow night, I believe it'll be a televised, streamed, whatever, recorded meeting of the charter review. I'd encourage everybody to pay attention, to listen to it, to watch it. Nice that it's recorded, that you can come back and do it on your own time, your own schedule. Lot of, lot of discussions are gonna take place and the minutes are available from the first meeting that they had a couple of weeks ago. If you would like to obtain a copy of that, just make a request through the city. But please pay attention to the discussions and bring input. I think it's important. This is your city, own it. How do you want it to look twenty, thirty years down the road? At the pace that we move, fifty, sixty years down the road. But there's gonna be a lot of important changes being discussed and considered for all of us. You'll ultimately have the vote on whether you like what's being done or not. So, thank goodness, right? Always trust the voters. Along with Dr. Green leaving, in the last Audit and Finance Committee, I requested that we take a look at the Crackerneck Creek development. We're going to be asking for some tax dollars to be spent on our public safety issues that we have, and we have many. And if there's revenue out there, we need to find a way to collect it, which means that we need to look at it, the agreement from a legal standpoint, from an auditing standpoint, so that if there's something that's owed to the city to take some of that tax burden off of you, we need to do that. So Mister City Manager, I'm asking if there's a way that we can, this is not something that I think we can sit around and wait for. If there's a way that we can collect the materials, Mister Hobart maybe can help add to this discussion a little bit, but to have an outside analyst look at it for us, I think it would behoove us as a city to do everything we can to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So is there a way that we can do that? Do we need to bring something forward for council approval?
Let me work with our staff to see what kind of cost might be associated with having somebody do that. I agree with you that, you know, we want to keep our projects moving forward. Let me figure out the right person or entity to ask, figure out the financial component and bring a proposal forward for the committee and/or council's consideration.
Yeah, and I'd appreciate it because I, again, I know that you kind of laid a framework when you were our city analyst and I, there's probably some places that I haven't considered or looked and many of us have not. So if you could kind of direct that a little bit would be good and then if we can make that happen, I think it would be a smart move on our part, so.
Absolutely.
That's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember.
I want to just give a couple of commendations. And turn the microphone on. Couple of commendations, people who never get thanked, you know, the finance department, we had a clean audit and as unsexy as that is, it should reassure you the time and energy that went into accounting, making sure that we are appropriately utilizing funds. So it's always good when you have a clean audit, so just a shout out to them. On my way over here tonight, I passed Glendale Park and there were ten kids out there playing ball and goofing around and rolling in the leaves. And I just wanted to give a special thank you to the Parks Department for making sure they have a wonderful place to play. It's well-maintained, it's just a lovely park, so thank you to you and your team. We got to celebrate with the firefighters. They welcomed nine new members to their team and they promoted three additional of their folks. So it was a fun evening and the families were there to celebrate and it was lovely. So thank you for including us. And then my last shout out goes to the Palmer Center. Do you know that they deliver nine hundred meals a month and that they serve a thousand people a month, or a thousand meals a month to senior citizens? And it's just one of those kind of quiet services that the city does. I would imagine that the folks who are serving those meals don't get a lot of kudos. So from the council, if you would just pass on our appreciation of the work that they do to both create community and make sure that people have a good meal. So thank you very much, Mister Mayor, that's all I have.
Very, very good. Also, just want to do a shout out to the Kansas City Chiefs, an incredibly thrilling year. Even, who would have thought we would have talked about an ankle quite as much as we did this past year and hopefully... And hopefully that this, and next Sunday, that ankle is in great shape and ready to run away from the Eagles defenders early and often, so that we can have a thrilling game. Patrick Holmes and what he's done to this city is incredible. But I also want to give a shout out, you know, the offense always gets so much talked about, okay? They do. But this defense, if you go back and watch the last two minutes and thirty seconds of that game, the defense did an incredible job. Chris Jones, he's gonna get paid, okay? He's probably gonna like me saying this publicly, but he's gonna get paid. He absolutely dominated that game, and he took over. He was extraordinary. So, we so often hear about the incredible job the offense does, but the defense does not get enough. Going back to city business, Councilmember Stewart, I agree with you on the cleanup, and I've been working with city staff and Meg. I know you and I have talked about this and got the whole calendar ready to go for next year, so every month from April to October, we'll get that started and do that. And so, you'll be the first person I call on the volunteer list. So, there we go. But we've got that ready to go and to make that happen. But, and also, I just want to give a shout out to my colleagues. They were, these folks are very, very classy people. And the reason being is they did not ask for a resolution talking about the Eagles. With that, I'll close this meeting.